We will now get started. I'm pleased to welcome all the members of our committee this afternoon for our meeting, which is a day or two later than it normally would be. So at the moment, good afternoon, everyone. I am pleased to welcome committee members and guests of the Committee for Student Affairs and Special Programs. Everyone should have some form of electronic device, laptop, whatever, if not, and you need access to supporting documents for this meeting. It is someplace around. Where is that? There are copies of the agenda and supporting documents on the table. If you do not have paperless access at this time. You have received the minutes. May I have an approval for the minute of the meeting of January 9th, 2017? So, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of the Graduate School of Public Health and Health Policy Establishment of a College Association and Student Activity Fee. May I ask our Vice Chancellor, Rosa, to provide an overview?
Sure. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. In terms of the context in which the Graduate School of Public Health is requesting this action, they are proposing the establishment of a college association and the student activity fee. The fee is $41.45 established for each semester. The vote was 44 in favor, 14 opposed. 11.6 percent of students from the Graduate School of Public Health voted. The fee would establish extracurricular activities at the School of Public Health. And Dean Almohandes and Dean Ashish Josi are here to represent the college, and they have, I believe, some students with them. So Dean Almohandes and Dean Ashib, would you please join us here at the table? And Jane Davis from the General Counsel's Office is available to answer any questions that we may have regarding the establishment of a college association. Welcome, please. If members have any questions.
We now have at the table the members of the School of Public Health and Public Policy. Are there any questions?
Would anyone like to make a statement about the importance and the relevance of the fees to co-curricular programming at the School of Public Health?
We're honored to be asked to join the table. With your permission, I defer to my students in sharing their perspective.
Please, welcome.
Thank you.
For the record, could you please state your names?
Sure. My name is Kishana Mateo. I'm a doctoral student at the school.
And my name is William Robinson. I am an APH student, health policy management.
Thank you, welcome.
Sure. So both of us have been on the student bridging committee. It was a group that was assembled back in December. All students were, from their own volition, decided to be part of this bridging committee to put together a referendum for the student activity fee and also work on writing the constitution bylaws for a new graduate student association as a new school in an important transitional year. It was very important to have a group of students that were very active to meet regularly for the past six, seven months, to have this activity fee put through and to establish student governance. So this really is exciting for us as a school, as students, especially since we're new and we're looking to really support students in any way possible. And this fee, the college association and the graduate student association, is going to be absolutely vital to ensuring that students are supported in every way possible.
Oh, yes. We certainly have heard quite a few vocal students asking for student activities, basically with clubs and also with an alumni association as well. And legally, the student activity fee would be necessary in order to achieve that and to provide a solid foundation to achieve those goals for the rest of the history of the school.
Thank you. Donovan and Jane, thank you very much for joining us. And we're, in terms of the policy calendar, we're on item one, and these are our colleagues from the School of Public Health. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I had a couple of questions. First of all, there is some advising, there's an advisory role for faculty members of the public association.
Yes.
How will these faculty members be selected?
So we have a faculty student council, and these will be elected representatives from the faculty student council. So it's not going to be like just a random pick, but we'll have student actively participation on the nomination process.
So they'll come out of governments. The question I had was just related to the kinds of things that you'll be doing based on the description that I read. It seems like somebody who is training in the School of Public Health would need to make presentations and be involved in various projects in order to have professional training for the careers you hope to have. Is there going to be any way of making sure that this kind of experiential learning experience is supported beyond just a college association so that more than just a few students would be episodically assisted?
Yeah. Experiential learning forms part and parcel of the curriculum at the master's and doctoral level, as indicated by our accreditation body, the Council for Education and Public Health. So a certain number of hours in field experience are part of the curriculum itself, followed by a culminating experience where the incorporation of the skills during the entire curriculum gained, as well as the field experience are incorporated into a final presentation.
So the college association would be supporting, so supporting students who have difficulty?
Right. So actually, as part of the student activity fee, one of the primary items that, this is actually through a survey that we administered to the whole school to gauge needs, and one of them was support to attend conferences. This is absolutely vital for graduate students, masters, and doctoral students to be able to showcase their work, know that they will have financial support to attend conferences, especially outside of APHA, which is our, the public health's major conference. There are many, many other conferences that can give students the ability to present their work as first authors, and knowing that part of this activity fee will be there to support either registration for the conference or partial covering for travel, for example. This will be decided by the college association how to portion out the money that's collected. And so that's one way that students are going to be making presentations and really putting into practice what they're learning in the classroom.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Just for clarification, the School of Public Health supports any student that has a first authored presentation at our national professional body, which is the American Public Health Association. Last year, we had 12 students, doctoral and master students, present at the national conference. But since our domain is very diverse, the school is unable to support students at any of the other national conferences. And so we created a classification where the school is responsible for APHA, and if you have things accepted elsewhere, then the student fee will cover that.
It would also add to a much more robust experience as well as networking opportunities, both for those who attend those conferences and then later become members of the alumni association so that we can grow the school and expand the networks.
Yes.
And so when you were initially coming up with the number for the fee, what did you use as a guiding principle to develop the, so?
So part of the formative research before deciding on a dollar amount, we actually looked at student activity fees from other community schools, ones that are comparative in terms of graduate students, the size of the school, and we had a range of number options. And part of the survey that was administered to the whole student body included an option to vote essentially on different amounts, assuming it would cover issues, you know, one, two, three. And based on those, there was a very sort of clear trend in terms of, you know, a lower number and a higher number, conditional on whether it would cover certain activities. And so we found a happy medium and made sure that student body was accepting of that. We had an internal vote within the school to vote on that amount.
Well done.
Thank you. I was just going to ask, do the students have been represented, if you have any questions?
Thank you. I just want to make a comment, and I got a question. The first comment I'm going to make is that a student from your college, Rodrigo Cardozo, he did reach out to us throughout the year to tell us about the challenges you faced. And he shared with us that the dean has been very supportive in developing an association and activity fees. And so I want to thank you for that, dean, and helping them through this process. The question I have today is that pending the approval of this association, what will be the selection process of the first officers that will serve on the association, given that the election season has passed for the students?
So we've been working very, very hard in the last couple of weeks to ensure that we had actual elections. We just made the cut. We did it. We had elections at the end of April, early May, which actually overlapped with finals. And yet we still had students who ran for positions, ran for officer positions, both of us included. We ran for officer positions and were going to be part of the representing body. And so we do have elected students already to the college association. And so pending this approval, we'll start boots on the ground working this summer to figure out the student activity fee, how it's portioned out, and figure out how to process new clubs for the fall.
One of the most important things that we do have is a treasurer who would help oversee the.
Yes, we do, yes.
Any other question from students? That being the case, may I call the question, a motion to approve? Second? All in, those in favor?
Aye.
Approved.
With our gratitude, thank you very much.
Thank you. With the chair's permission, we can now move to policy calendar item number two, which is the fee resolution for the New York City College of Technology, which proposes a student activity fee increase. By way of context, there's the proposal of a $5.50 increase for full-time students and $4 for part-time students. This increase is to fund student government, clubs, and student activities. This represents the first increase since 1998. The vote was 420 students in favor and 258 students opposed. 4.5 percent of City Tech students voted, and we're pleased that President Hotzler is here to represent the college. President Hotzler, can you please join us? Welcome.
Thank you. Yes.
We call on you to justify this increase and?
Well, I think it's a fairly modest increase, the first time in 19 years that the students have requested the opportunity to increase the fee. And it basically comes down to increased costs, and they want to maintain the ability of the clubs and the student government to provide appropriate events and activities for the student body.
Any questions? Any question?
Yes. Are there any students here from the College of Technology?
No, I don't believe any came today.
Would you be able to provide a breakdown of what the new appropriations will go for each year?
Sure. I don't know if you have the detail of the resolution, but basically that increase, which is $5.50 for the full-time students, is broken up into three areas. There would be an increase in the student government appropriation, an increase to the clubs, and an increase to the services provided to the students. That 5.50 is broken up into those three categories.
Any other questions?
Could you kind of explain the, we see that there was a low turnout in the student elections, 4% of the total student population. Kind of highlight some of the reasons why the students didn't turn out to support an increase or to vote in general, either in our polls or in favor?
The results here are actually consistent with the average turnout that the college has seen over the years, every year for student elections, not particularly different from year to year. So we usually have about 5% of the students participating in the election process. Of course, this is done at the same time that they vote on the student body.
Are there any questions from faculty? No? Thank you.
I just would add one comment.
You have a comment?
Or recommendation. Given the turnout of the election, I would advise that if this were to go through, that some type of communication be sent out to all the students to notify them of the changes in the activity fee so that they are informed and have the ability to, you know, spread the word or contest their disagreement or agreement. With that, given that every student may not know that there's going to be a change in the activity fee pending in the fall, that would be my recommendation.
Yes.
There's actually a question to Mr. Borington. What, on average, is the turnout for typical elections, cuny-wide? You know, on average, what kind of turnouts do we get for votes in student elections?
It fluctuates, but 4%, it varies, but then you look at the amount of people that actually vote on said referendum. So you got a 4% turnout of the total population, but that doesn't mean the whole 4% voted in favor. And that's usually a concern that we've been having over the years. And so the only thing that I can kind of recommend is that so long as every student at the campus knows about the change and has the ability and opportunity to voice their concerns, that is okay. We can support that because it seems that they followed the process here. They did a petition, they got the 10%. Students came out and voted, and now the next step is to let those students that did not vote know that there's a change happening. And so they still have some steps in the process to voice their concern.
I would just be clear, I have a very active student government, and they really campaigned. This was an initiative driven by the student government, recognizing that they needed a little more support going forward. So they were very proactive in driving this forward.
Any other comment? Thank you.
I just, you know, I would just say that looking at various referendums that were part of this meeting and seeing the low numbers, I'm just wondering, and, you know, this isn't really imaginary, but there are ways in which certainly the faculty can support student associations in eliciting greater levels of participation among those students, particularly when you get down to bread and butter issues like student fees that go up. Because it's just, it's not a useful preparation for citizenship if they're not participating in this kind of sort of referendum.
Professor, I think it's a really great suggestion on our end in student affairs. This Friday, we're pleased to host the New Leadership Challenge, which is an opportunity for newly elected student leaders from across the university to gather and do some developmental work at Brooklyn College. And for us, at least in terms of our framing, today, we can make that a point of emphasis. That way, the student leaders themselves can be affirmed in that message. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment? Thank you so much, Vice Chancellor.
Great. Call the question.
Are there, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? The motion is approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, President Hotzler. Thank you. We now move to policy calendar item number three, resolution at John Jay College of Criminal Justice. They propose a student activity fee increase. The increase calls for a $30 increase for full-time undergraduate students and a $25 increase for part-time undergraduate students and a $20 increase for graduate students. The increase proposes to improve services across the board with several new earmarkings designed to benefit students. The last increase at John Jay was in 2013, and prior to that increase, 25 years before that, there was an 18% voter participation rate. The vote was 979 in favor and 942 opposed. Here is AVP Michael Sacks, along with some student leaders who I'll ask him to introduce. Michael, thank you.
Hello, my name is Michael Sacks. I am the Assistant Vice President Dean of Students at John Jay College, and I'll let the students introduce themselves.
Hi, my name is Javar Duffus. I'm the Treasurer of Student Council for School Year 2016-2017.
And I'm Roman Gressier, Vice President of Student Council for School Year 2016-17.
Welcome.
Any discussion on the question? Yes.
I have a question.
I'm starting with the student this time around. Go ahead.
Very good.
Look at that, yeah.
My question is that I've seen in some of the materials that there's a breakdown, there's a new set of areas that the college seeks to appropriate funding for, and I just have a bit concerned that this is a very high increase for the student activity fee within one year. Could you explain the reasoning behind the new allocation for these different areas and services?
So are students being involved on campus? The population is increasing. So I know a lot of the times when we think of cuny, it is a commuter college, and a lot of times, students often have to work and they also have to attend classes, but not many students stay on campus and actually engage in club activities as well as participate in the other functions that the college has to offer. But that population is increasing, and with that increase of the population, we also requested an increase for the budget. Also, the specific reason we pushed for the referendum was to get a full-time nurse on campus. Currently, we have a part-time nurse on campus, which is kind of hectic. For instance, there was a day where I was sitting in someone's office and I accidentally ate shellfish. I'm allergic to shellfish. There was no one there to even be with me for the duration of, let's say, an ambulance to come or whatever to happen. Someone had to run to Dwayne Reed to get me what I needed to calm down from my reaction to the shellfish. So that is the primary reason. We also increased the accessibilities for additional programming. The LGBTQ plus unit that you see there is to pay for the coordinator, a portion of the coordinator's salary there. We also increased United Nations because historically, they've come to student council to request funds. Student council is one of the largest earmarks on the association that did not get an increase. You'll also see that there is a single stop that is on there that we also requested funding for because there's a specific position within single stop that provides services to the students that the contract ends within three years, and we don't know if that contract will be renewed. So we have to be prepared for if that doesn't happen to ensure that we can supplement for our students. We also have an increase for careers, which is a program, within careers, they have a program that they pay students with stipends. It's more of a program for students to help other students get themselves ready, job-ready. And we also pay for media services that you see there.
I just, thank you. If it's okay, I just have a follow-up question. As a student at the college, do you think services as career services, having a full-time nurse on campus, having a coordinator for LGBT things, do you think that's essential? Should the college have that in place for you?
So, if I could speak to that, I think that in many ways, students are, in many ways, paying a lot of money to come to the college, and they're expecting certain things as a result of that education. They're expecting to have adequate access to internships and opportunities, which comes through careers. They're expecting to not get to their senior year and realize that they should have taken three classes a year before that, and they should have gone through this track or that track, whereas if they had better access to academic advising and things of that nature, then they might have had a better opportunity to stay on track. You know, there are all sorts of, I think that it's really part of the overall academic value that students are getting when they come to the college. It's something that they expect, and when it's not there, because of a commuter school, that's a problem. And so in talking with all these different departments, they would always come to us and ask for more funding. So they would say, "Look, we are really hurting, we're in a pinch, we don't have enough money to give all the services that we need to all the students that are asking." And so when we initiated this referendum, that was one of the primary, that was one of the preliminary things that we did, was gathering all the information about who needed money and where. And so all of these earmarks that we created were strictly based on need as assessed by their petitions.
And I think therein lies one of our most challenging issues that we face today in the university, that we're now using the activity fee, which was created for students to have an experiential learning opportunity while they're attending a City University College. But now we're covering the student activity fee to pay for the daily needs that our students should already have at the campus. And as you see, an exorbitant amount of $30 to fund a full-time nurse, which our students need, to fund career services, to fund academic departments so students have a quality education. I'm just very concerned that this is the path that we're continuing to go down. As tuition rises, students are going to have their activity fee increase to fund things that our students need to have a basic quality education.
Can I respond to that?
Yes, you may.
So a lot of the things that are increased here also specifically benefit the students financially. For instance, you see that there are advocate programs, like, or rather, what we're doing in careers, where we're paying students to assist other students. So it all, essentially, it all goes back into the students' benefit, which I also think is the purpose of our students' activity fee.
Yes.
I have a couple of things. One is I see that it was a hotly contested election. I mean, 18%, so that's almost five times the average that Mr. Donovan, Mr. Borington spoke about previously. And it was close, right? Only about 20 votes difference. So I wonder if you wanted to share about that? What was the tenor of the election?
May I?
Yes.
Okay. Well, to speak to that a bit, so we noticed a few things. The more informed students were about the services that they would receive from the increase, the more receptive they were. But if we were just to say, "Hey, we're jacking up the fee," then students obviously would say, "Oh, no, you know, we don't want that." But throughout the process of elections, we even have advisors that were tabling, and they came back to us and reported that the more students knew, the more receptive they were, and the more they tended to vote yes according to the trends that they could track throughout the day. So a lot of it was based on, a lot of, I think a lot of the votes against the proposal were based on lack of information or misinformation.
So, but it was tight. It was still very tight. The other thing is there's actually something in our packet which speaks to, it's Board of Trustees Minutes of Proceedings, April 29th, 2013, and it says, John Jay College Criminal Justice Student Activity Fee Increase. According to this, it says the last fee increase was in 2013, and it went from 4960 to 9960. So my understanding was you were saying that the fee had not increased in 20 years? Are you saying it was, no, that was, was that a mis?
They didn't say that.
That was the intention.
That was, am I confused?
Yeah. They found that they raised it in 2013, but that prior to that, that it hadn't been raised in that amount of time.
Okay. Well, then I just want to share one last thing concerning Mr. Borington's statement, is that is something that maybe as a committee, we need to take a look at in the way that the relationship between what's expected from the institution based on tuition payments, and then what's expected that things like student activity fees should typically pay for. Because I, we always, you know, personally, from the old days, I would always think student activity fees were enhancements to the school experience, the day-to-day classroom experience. And take a look at this because certainly I know that the USS is concerned with rising tuition and fees, and now we have Excelsior coming down the pipe, which will only actually cover. cover tuition. So, you know, there's a lot of concerns, and maybe we might want to look at that down the road, how all these things are relating to each other, and what various colleges are doing as far as how are they taking care of basic services throughout the college.
Any other? Yes.
And just to note, that the previous increase to the student activity fee again covered one of those essential costs that should have been covered within the college. And so, to see these drastic increases in the student activity fee in addition to the students' tuition is a lot, and it concerns me as a student representative here that in a very contested election, that I don't have a clear guidance as to what the will of the John Jay students was. Particularly, I'm actually a student at John Jay. And so, I look at that and I say, "Well, what did the people at John Jay want?" And I didn't see that they're all saying, "We want an increase of this magnitude." And in fact, you said that those that voted against didn't have the right information. Was that not the responsibility of those pushing the referendum to say, "Get the accurate information out so we can make a decision?" And I commend you on your work. We appreciate what you do on behalf of the students. It's not to undermine, I understand that is tough, and you're trying to make a better experience for the students at John Jay. But again, as a student representative, I'm just making sure that what we're doing is in support and in the best interest of those students, so that they continue to walk through the door at CUNY, and they're not hindered in any way by the type of services or programs that we offer.
If I may.
Yes.
Since I have been at John Jay for about eight months now, I've never seen a group of students in my twenty-five years in higher ed that push information out in a variety of different ways, various types of media, on our boards, on our posters, every way to get students to understand what this particular referendum was about. Not saying vote or don't vote, but here are the facts and here what it is. We just completed a diversity survey at John Jay, the first that ever has occurred on the climate. There was an eight, there was a twelve percent response rate of all students, which is one of the highest response rates we ever had. The areas that are earmarked here that represent diverse areas are ones that the students very clearly said we need, like a full-time LGBTQ A coordinator as opposed to a quarter-time. Areas that are essential to the growth of a very diverse, very active student population. What the services will provide is a very well-rounded experience for students that go to John Jay, and it will allow them to succeed and to move on to other careers and beyond John Jay. And so, normally, I would say, yes, this is a high number, and I agree with you, in many other institutions, these are services that would be provided out of the general budget, but they're services that our students need and they desperately need.
Thank you.
Yes.
I just wanted to follow up again. So, now redoing my math, we're almost tripling the student fee in the span of four years. If we're looking at the forty-nine sixty number from, before the passing of this in twenty thirteen, and now we're looking at a number of one hundred and thirty, nine is it, what is, where's my, I'm getting all my numbers, so many numbers here. No, one hundred and thirty, twenty, it's close to tripling in the manner, in the span of four years. I'm just, for information's sake, I'm just putting it out there.
Yes.
I'd notice that. Another senior college just walked in here with a similar referendum, but they only chose to increase it by almost less than half of what this is proposing. One-twenty is a lot of money, actually, from junior students. The original proposal at ninety-nine still probably is the top when it comes to student activity fee around CUNY. So, you said you were playing catch-up in the last twenty-five years, and when you increase your student activity fee in twenty thirteen, you almost just caught up. So, I can understand, in the past years before, you didn't have enough funding, so you didn't have a, what's that called, the budget that will, the surplus, which you could dive in and use, but then, increasing the student activity fee for the future students wouldn't catch up with the surplus. So, you're probably going to have to export more money from CUNY Central and CUNY as a whole, rather than the students.
Yes.
Please, correct me if I'm wrong. I believe that it was, these issues were brought up in a couple of forums, that there's some need at John Jay, and I believe that our Chair of the Board said that we need to look into that and find ways to fund full-time nurses and essential things. I don't know where the conversation went since then, but I do think as a system, we need to look across at our campuses and see where there's funding to make sure we have essential things, because I stand with you, that we do need to make sure you have a full-time nurse on campus for the safety of our students. But I don't know if making it come from the activity fee is the route that we should be going.
Yes.
So, I understand that, that, you know, the free, the fee is tripled and that, you know, we're increasing it and we're relying on the student activities fee, but these things are essential and they need to happen. And even though they're essential and they need to happen, it's something that the students expressed that they wanted, and the students came to us about it, and we, as student leaders, pushed the agenda for the students, right? In terms, and Michael Sacks brought it up, we did the best we could to advertise and to inform the most amount of students that we could. And at the end of the day, I don't think it comes down to the numbers. As important as those numbers may be, and to some, I think it is also important that the students get what they desire out of John Jay, and that it comes from them because they have expressed that they wanted it, right? So, I think if we push any other avenue of budgeting that we can, my question is, how long will that take? Because at the end of the day, not only was it just me who went through an allergic reaction, but maybe a month later, I saw a student in a gurney going to a hospital. It takes seventeen minutes for the hospital that is right next to our school to come into our school and pick up a student, right? So, in that seventeen minutes, something can happen, and we don't have anyone on campus to take care of that student. So, how long will that avenue take as opposed to this one that the students expressed that they needed, right?
If I might just add to that also, not for nothing, John Jay has been a senior college since the sixties, and we still don't have a full-time nurse on campus. And so, to that point, I would say, how long do we have to wait? And so, the students have said, "Well, no, we're going to take things into our own hands, and we're going to do this and get the services that our students need." And I think at the end of the day, we have to do what we have to do to provide our students with the basic needs to have an enriching academic experience.
I, I, I wholeheartedly agree with you. I just disagree with the direction, and as your student representative on this committee and throughout this university, I'm committed to making sure that you have that essential need, whether it comes from the state, the city, the federal government, or the central office. That's what I'm committed to, and I know my colleague, John, here is committed to that, and we'll do what we can to make sure it happens. But again, that first thing we're always thinking about is the access for all students, and sometimes raising the fee can close the door for two or three students that don't get financial aid, not all, you know, four out of their ten students are not on, don't get financial aid. And so, when you raise the fee, you put their access in jeopardy, and that's what we're concerned about, even if it's one or two students, it's the access for all. So, we agree that these things are essential and they're needed. I just would add that.
Okay, I'll take the last comment.
If I may, also, I pay out of pocket, and I pay out of state, and I'm virtually, probably about ninety-five percent financially self-sufficient. Everything that I pay for school comes directly out of my bank account. And so, I'm not saying this from a stance of, "Well, you know, daddy's paying my tuition, and so, it doesn't really matter to me if there's another thirty dollars on somebody else." It's coming straight from my money. And so, I can only speak for myself in saying that as somebody who has to pay for this, I want it for me and I want it for everybody else. So, I'd just like to close with that.
Final, final.
Absolutely. So, I'm very glad you paid for your pocket, you got us, for your tuition yourself. That's a very commendable thing. So, you're absolutely right, all the services are required and are needed to complete the educational process at CUNY. But looking at the numbers, ninety-seven, nine to nine forty-two, pretty sure the students, most of the students probably didn't even know what they were voting for, although you said you did push out the numbers and the facts and everything. It's still very tight, still a very tight election. Like, unless you are voting for people in office, this doesn't really always go through when it comes to a referendum, unless you're putting people in office. This is a referendum, something consensus has to be built around it to get passed. Do you want anything else to that?
Okay, I'd like, I'd just like, may I then just call the motion for approval? May I solve it?
So, second?
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Maybe I need a show of hand? Okay, the motion is approved.
Thank you.
Any opposed?
For the record, I abstain.
The motion is approved.
Thank you. Moving to policy calendar item number four, Hunter College re-earmarking of the undergraduate student activity fee. By way of context, Hunter College is proposing no change in total fees. Due to changes in their allocating bodies, the re-earmarking would require Board of Trustee approval. There was a ten percent voter participation. In terms of this resolution, nine hundred and thirty-six voted in favor, six hundred and ninety-two opposed. Vice President Aravanian is here, and will represent the college. Welcome, Aya. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice President Aravanian, would you like just to make a statement about the resolution?
Yes, I'm Aya Aravanian. I'm the Vice President of Student Affairs and Dean of Students, and I first thank you, and I want to send my apologies. President Rab could not be here because she had another commitment based on some changes in the meeting, but she sends her very best wishes and thanks you for this opportunity. This is only a change in our earmarks that was initiated by Matt LaCastro, as you probably have his statement in your packet, who is a student government representative as well as president this year. And to my memory, because I've been at CUNY for a little while, we have not done any changes in earmark in the last twenty to thirty years. And so, this particular student government, they're really very active and in calling on participation from all the students and clubs and organizations, and they decided that they need to take a fresh look at what has been earmarked in the last twenty and thirty years and see that perhaps we have a new and different population at CUNY than we had then, perhaps we have new and different needs and answers to students who have been asking and talking about various kinds of services that we have. So, we have not changed the overall fee, but we have changed how we distribute the money that is collected from our students. Thank you.
Question?
Yes. I see that there is a line for renovation of student space. There's been some redistribution here.
Yes.
Right? And you have undergraduate tuition services and Office of Accessibility.
How is the revenue used for the renovation of student space?
Well, we have a building called Thomas Hunter Hall, which is the original elementary and high school building, and every once in a while, clubs need to have some renovations in the current space, whether they want to put up a wall, take down a wall, put up lights, change electricity and things of that sort, or change the lights in the hall in that particular Thomas Hunter Hall. They're all interior changes, and the students for the past certainly seventeen years since President has been, President Rab has been the president, she has generally paid for half of their renovations, and they kick in the other half, more or less half. So, they're minor, they're not huge renovations. One in the last five years was a renovation to a student club room that is used by all students for various activities in the evening, whether it's panels and whether it's discussions and poetry readings and things of that sort.
Yes.
How do you feel about walking through the rationale for some of the switching that's going, as far as moving the money around? Are you comfortable doing it?
Yes, I am.
We can just go down the list between current and proposed for full-time, since obviously part-time would only be a fraction
Right.
of those numbers.
Right.
So, only where there are changes, obviously.
Right, and if I may, just comment on some of the new initiatives that students have come up with, and one of them is the tutoring services, is that we're very concerned about graduation rates, we're very concerned about retention rates, and students themselves said that we need to have more tutoring services. And so, we're working very closely, we'll be working very closely with the student government and specifically the School of Arts and Sciences, where most of our students are, and some of the tutoring services that are needed by students who are kind of on the cusp in terms of doing a little bit better. So, I feel very good about that aspect, and I must say, I feel quite good about all of the changes. You also notice that there is a change in emergency food and shelter, in that students, as many of our schools, we have students in need, whether that be Metro cards, whether that be food, whether that sometimes would be housing and help with rent that has been behind, or with books and things of that sort. So, the student government has now voted that they will set aside this amount of money to be given to the Office of Student Affairs, and I have an individual in our office who manages this, who gets Metro cards, who gets food cards from Food Emporium and other places, as well as the ability to give out some stipends to students who are in dire need of emergency money. And then, of course, we have meticulous bookkeeping for the student government, and so, it's really worked out really nicely because students feel cared for, they feel that they're part of the college, there's a sense of community in that, and that there's a place for them to go and a face for them to see when they are in trouble of this sort. There's also for healthcare products, that seems to be a very large request from especially female students for any kind of healthcare products, and so, the student government felt very strongly about providing healthcare products specifically for women, and they will be placed in Student Activities Office, in my office, in the health office, in admissions, in any of the offices that are large enough to hold students, and I feel quite good about that. We're working out the details exactly how that's to be done, but we'll find a way on that aspect as well. And then, the student government voted that some of the surplus money, we create a fund in the College Association for all students at Hunter College who have this kind of unique project they want to do. And they're not perhaps even part of a club, but there's a number of students who want to do this unique product, project, or experiential learning type of situation where they can apply for money for these kinds of projects, and obviously, be done not repeatedly, but every time there's an application for it, and it'll be judged, and students will be on the committee to judge this. So, I feel rather nice about that, because it's a nice opportunity for students who are commuter students to be able to be engaged in what the university calls now experiential activities and learnings and so forth. So, yes, I feel good about that.
Well, speaking to things like, looks like intercollegiate athletics,
Okay.
recreation, performing arts, all get bumps, and then the yearbook takes a hit, but I'm guessing there's, you know, people are going digital, and the media board as well is probably outdated. Music goes up, so I feel good about that, being an arts professor. The Green Initiative also loses some money, which is kind of funny considering the concerns of global warming, whether people believe in it or not. Childcare has also lost money, and I'm wondering if the numbers of students who have children that need, you know, that need caring during school hours is, has dropped. Also, the Welfare Rights Initiative, I'm not really sure exactly what that is, but has lost. I know that welfare was changed in the Clinton administration, but I see that it's being moved. So, I don't know what Envoy is, excuse me, or the radio, I guess the radio station is obsolete in some sense, but Office of Student Activities certainly has gotten, and I don't know if you've mentioned that before, but they got the biggest bump. That's the biggest change on the, and, well, the tutoring you already mentioned. I don't know if you want to speak to any of those.
I'm happy to comment on those, yes, thank you. Well, we certainly, we view that athletics is an important component of student success in the college. We find that our athletes are really quite successful academically as well as performance-wise, and we'd like to have more students come to our meet, our- and we'd like to have more students come to our games and our meets and so forth. And so we want to have it more advertised, we want to give opportunities for more students to have recreational athletic times. So we felt that, as a college, that this was a good thing to bump up some of their fees. In terms of childcare, when Donna Shalala established the childcare center at Hunter College about thirty years ago, when she was at the college, and she came back for the reunion of twenty-five years, and what she said, as we looked at the pictures on the wall, and she said, you know, every college around the country, the childcare needs are decreasing for the most part, because our neighborhoods have childcare centers and childcare facilities and so forth, and that's true at Hunter as well, is that we have fewer students now who are more traditional college age, we have more students who are traditional college age, coming from high school to college, and very few of them have children, or have children the age that go to the childcare center. So the population has decreased, and this decrease will not hurt that particular center. We have very carefully spoken to them about that as well. In terms of the music and the arts and so forth, our symphony is, in a sense, not totally funded by it, but certainly helped by the Student Activity Fee. Our student music clubs, we have all kinds of music clubs and arts clubs, from dancing to singing and to playing and things of that sort, so that is being helped by as well. You also mentioned, you also mentioned that the welfare rights, well, we now, this is, this is an organization that really serves CUNY, I have to say. By their own admission, they not only serve Hunter College students, these are advocacy group of women who run this organization that helps students advocate for themselves. And now, there's a little bit of fuzzy feeling about it, because we now have CUNY Edge. Many of our colleges have, we used to be CUNY Cope, and now we have CUNY Edge. And it's a very successful program funded by CUNY, and we have two individuals who are actually working on it. So we felt that they cover more of the student population than perhaps the welfare rights did, because they only solely focus on the advocacy, but they do it for all of the CUNY. However, they house that Hunter. And it was established many, many years ago by a sociology professor, and I don't know the genesis of it. Then, we also have the Office of Accessibility, their money really hasn't changed in that, and obviously we've helped them. Envoy is a school newspaper, and unfortunately this year, they did not run themselves very well. And they did not publish very much at all, and the same thing with the Green Initiative, although one would think that this would be the up and coming, and it probably is. But it wasn't run very well, and though they do a lot of activities that involved a lot of students and so forth. So perhaps the students felt that once they got the act really together, we can maybe do this again in a different way. So this is, I think I covered most of the things that you asked about.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yes.
I just have a concern, especially with the childcare center. I know you mentioned that the number of students that are parents has dwindled down, but across our system, there are students that potentially don't have access to childcare services at their very campus due to overpopulation. Has the college considered offering opportunities to students at another college, the ability to attend childcare services at Hunter?
I'm not sure that the federal funding that we get would be approved for that, but I don't know that. We do have space in our childcare center for any of our students who do have children of the age that they serve, which is, you know, basically have to be toilet trained, and then also the after-school population. We do have spaces for our own students, I don't know about the other, whether that's even a possibility.
So, I mean, I can, I can just, I don't know about the capacity. But our protocol at the university is that the home campus, obviously, students get first priority, then we offer it to, where there are waiting lists, to other campuses, and then at that point, a campus has the option of extending the opportunity for faculty-staff childcare at prevailing market rates, but I don't know, I'd have to look into the capacity.
Our capacity, sorry, excuse me, our capacity at this moment is that we can't take more children.
And so, if what I'm hearing, there's space, before we divest in the program for childcare services, we need to see if there's an opportunity to offer students at the sister colleges like Baruch, John Jay, Gutman, BMCC, or City College, which is in the vicinity of Hunter College, before we turn away any students. Because I know of students that are looking for services, but they couldn't get in because they go to some of these colleges, but may live close to Hunter.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, including if they're federal dollars, if the money's not spent, there has to be a way in which it is returned, and I think rather than doing that, we should, we should do an outreach to the sister institutions.
We try never to return the federal money, by the way, excuse me, we try very hard never to return federal money.
That's what I'm telling you right now, I'm coming from childcare, so I know how those rules work.
Yes, of course.
But just to echo what Vice President Aravanian, her comments, that we are finding a dynamic that childcare centers are facing, where community options are expanding. And that's, that's sort of the marketplace for childcare services, particularly in Manhattan. There are more options now, so we still have a lot of unmet need, but there are other, there are other competing options. And we're trying to make sure that we're relevant, more relevant.
If I might also add is that we do have pre-K now, so some of the children that were going to childcare in our place have chosen to go to the pre-K classes in their own neighborhoods, that's more convenient for the parents who goes to this college.
So may I have a motion to approve? Second, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? I think you have that.
Thank you.
Lovely, thank you very much, thank you.
Policy calendar item number five, York College Student Activity Fee Increase. York College is proposing an increase of five dollars in the student activity fee for full-time students, part-time, and summer activity fees. The last fee increase that York experienced was in 2010. This vote was a close one, eighty-nine in favor and eighty-seven opposed, a 2.6% voter participation rate. It has strong support from President Keys, and we're very pleased that President Keys and Vice President Van Rae could be here today to discuss this with us. May, could you please join us?
We also have some students.
Oh, thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Great, and to our student leaders, welcome, could you please introduce yourself for the record?
Sure, I'm Marcia Keys, President York College.
Rachel Antone, Student Body President.
Susan Barrett, Student Government Vice President.
Vincent Van Rae, Vice President Student Development.
Welcome.
So we'll take questions, if you like, because the documents are in front of you, yes, it's a close vote. But it did pass by two, a small vote for us, two, 2.6, 2.7. And, but we do want you to know that the petitioning period, we had the necessary petitions, 10% or so, and we did have an election that was certified by CERC. We'll take questions.
Any questions? Yeah.
How many students voted in the general elections?
The same, if I, yeah.
A hundred and seventy-six.
Yeah.
A hundred and seventy-six voted total for the elections and for the referendum.
Yes.
Out of a student population of?
About eight thousand.
Six thousand, six thousand seven metricated students.
Six thousand seven hundred metricated students.
Is there, does the notice go out ahead of time so that all students know?
Yes, the notice, yes, the notice went out, and the, this particular election was uncontested, so there were not a lot of students running, and the other factor was that the election was held right after spring break, when students came back that particular week, and we're looking at improving that by having the elections done prior to the spring break time.
And also with the help of student government, we also had our members going around speaking to the student body as well about the referendum increase.
Yes.
Yeah, and it, as mentioned with the prior college, John Jay, this is a pattern. And what really alarms me is that, you know, our colleges are reaching the 10% threshold for petitions, meaning that the student body is willing to entertain the conversation. But yet, they won't come back out to take an action on it. And so that's what concerns us most, because I signed up and said, hey, I'm willing to see this on the ballot, but I'm not coming back to the polls to tell you what I think about it. And so, for us, a hundred and seventy-six people out of six thousand, everybody said, I'm willing to hear the conversation, but I don't want to make a decision on it, and so no one's, we don't have consensus, very tight election, eighty-nine out of, eighty-seven. It's tough, I don't know if I can support that, I don't know if that's the will of the students at York College.
Well, it's the will of the people who voted, obviously. However, you know, a majority of two is not a significant majority, but it is a majority. If it had been the other way, we wouldn't be sitting here.
Yes.
Perhaps I could hear from the students why the secrecy, since I got two students in the room?
Okay, I've had the opportunity to work in the student body government at York College. And within my two years of experience, I've received a lot of complaints when it comes to the fund that the clubs are receiving, and it was extremely low, and before we took such decision, we had plenty of conversations with the club members, as well as student leaders who are on campus. And to initiate this increase, we also talked about different ways that we would also involve the president of the clubs by forming a club council to have them involved in it. It's extremely important, especially within our association meeting this year, the money actually ran, it ran out. And we had to find other ways to help the student body, from receiving thirteen thousand a year, there will be an increase to forty-five thousand, and it will benefit the student clubs.
Just to also state if it's okay, you know, this is another way of actually having our clubs, you know, enforce the policy or the process of experiential learning. You know, as an individual or as students, we'll be able to grow if we're learning about, you know, anybody's respected culture or anybody's respected fields that they're going in, but that's what I would like to say.
Thank you.
Just want to add that what makes this a little bit easier to support, as opposed to the other college, it's a five-dollar increase, whereas the other college was a thirty-dollar increase. But it's, you know, again, it's tough, I don't have a direction from the students at York. That's, that's who I look to for direction, and I do understand you're the elected student representatives, but where I'm at, at this table, I don't see a clear consensus from York saying, Donovan, vote this way, this is what we want. But again, I do see it's five dollars, and it's not much on the students, but I would, you know, if I were to support this, I would urge that you go back and communicate to all the students, to let them know the change that's about to occur, that they have the right to voice their concern at a public board hearing, and what measures and support services the college has to offer for the change in tuition, if it were to occur.
We always try to have like a conversation with the students, especially here, our campus newspaper, Pandora Box, we put the information out there as well, email blast, we talk to them. It's really hard to really get York students to stay on campus, so what we do is set tables and try to have a one-on-one conversation with them, and town hall meetings as well. We also have a town hall meeting on that.
Justy Gotti.
I wanted to make a comment because, you know, this is the second time also that we mention it, but I think it's reflective of how the election world or this space works, where you have a majority and they don't partake. And I think it's not just in schools, but in the US, all right? So it's very reflective, to me, I'm like, this is how, this is where we are, and it's unfortunate that there's not more involvement, and I'm concerned with that too, because you're right, there's a whole other world that you don't know. But the lesson is, you need to participate, right? That's what we tell people, you need to vote, your voice needs to be heard, you need to be engaged, and that's something that I think in general needs to be added. But, you know, at the same time, you know, they are voting, they are, the ones that are voting are putting in their, you know, pieces of fans to say, it was a, it was a close race, I agree, I'm glad it's only five dollars. It makes it easier to stomach, you know? But, you know, coming from this background, it's an ongoing battle. And I think this year we saw that, or last year we saw that heavily. But, you know, just to say that, I know that it's a challenge, and you can get out there and send all the mail you want. After a while, people don't even see it anymore, they just toss it, you know? So you can inform people, but either they want to participate or not, and this would be, hopefully, examples of when they say, I have an extra five dollars, what happened here? It says, well, you didn't vote, next time you're going to pay attention to that, and hopefully we'll have higher numbers, and that's what I'm hoping, I'm hoping for moving forward.
Yes.
I agree with everything that was just said, I mean, I think of the terms like vote with your feet, right? You just leave, you don't participate, and usually like the sign of when things are going well is when fewer people vote. But as a body, we, the, I mean, this committee and general student affairs, we need to consider, and it doesn't have to be about this particular issue, but in the future, our minimum expectation of participation on the part of students in voting, particularly when it comes to fiscal affairs. So that's something that we might, once again, look into and consider, what we would expect. And, you know, obviously, this is going to travel down to the institutions, and, because I, though I believe you when you say you made your best effort to get a turnout. If you found out, you got here, that you needed at least five to 10% of the student body voting, you know, I wonder what the effort will be of the next institution. So that's something we, you know, we need to think of, is granted, as said before, it is kind of a reflection of what's going on, but we're the ivory tower, so we can raise our expectations. And in fact, hope that here, people behave better than they will in real life. So it's something that we might want to consider in the future.
How we could help.
Yeah, well, obviously, we're here for support.
Justy Sunshine, I'll come back to you.
I mean, I agree with everything that you can say, this is a disgrace. I mean, you know, you're, you're active and you're trying to do something, and the fact that people can't vote, I mean, and Myron made an analogy to a certain election last year, where, you know, participation and voter turnout changed the election, and we wouldn't have those hearings tomorrow if a few more people voted in a couple of key states, but, you know, I'm having trouble getting past that. But, look, I think it is a rallying cry for the activists, particularly talking to the students in all the campuses, that, you know, you've got to push your fellow students, you're out there trying to get this done. And, yeah, this is the worst now, it's only five dollars, so it's, you know, it takes on less importance on one level, but get in the habit of voting for everything, never not vote. In the other part of my life, I, you know, still obviously, it's just like therapy for that election. I'm obsessed, there is no excuse not to vote, it's not hard, and it's, anybody says it's, it doesn't make a difference, they're wrong. And that's the philosophy.
Yes.
I just wanted to, I have a class I have to teach, so my students are waiting for me, it's a final, please forgive me. Thank you for your time, thank you.
You didn't mention, and thank you so much for coming.
I appreciate it, have a wonderful day.
May I have a motion to approve for five dollars? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions, the motion is approved.
Thank you very much. And will be advised by the comments you made today, sir, thank you.
Policy calendar item number six, the School of Professional Studies, the establishment of a college association. And here, I know Jane, is Jane Davis here?
She is.
Great, we're pleased to have as content expert, our colleague from the General Counsel's Office, Jane Davis, who's available in the event that you have any questions about the establishment of college associations. But in June 2016, the board established a student activity fee of twenty-five dollars for the School of Professional Studies, and the college association is the entity that would administer these fees. And, so Jane, would you mind, please? Oh, great, oh, I'm sorry, sorry, John, we're joined by Dean Mogalescu and Zee Lobley, and students, thank you. Sorry about that. Thanks for being here. Thanks for being here.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon. Uh, so I'm John Mogalescu and the dean of the CUNY School of Professional Studies. Uh, I'll let folks, uh, Zee Lobley is our director of student services and Zee will introduce our two students as well.
So these are two student leaders. They are the co-chairs of the Student Association, which this body approved last June. They are Adet Humphries and Shaquima Williams Jones. And Shaquima was named the student leader of CUNY, the singular position, student leader of CUNY of the year this year for all the work that her association and, and Adet together, uh, made the association happen and, and did enormous amount of work. So now we're ready to bring a college association into the mix to help oversee those financial issues.
Thank you. Welcome. And congratulations.
Thank you.
Any, anyone?
Yes.
So could I hear from the student leaders, please, um, what sorts of things were revisionally achieving within your college association?
Well, we actually conducted, um, a student survey because we wanted to know, we realized that we are student representative and we wanted to do what the students want. And essentially, um, the gist of what they were saying to us is that they want more cultural activities, they want more community activities. Um, we are predominantly online school. And so the thing that is hardest when you have, um, students who are going to school online all the time and not having to build, to visit the building constantly is that there's a lack of a sense of community because you're not seeing people face to face. You know, someone is just an avatar and an email address. And you're not just gonna randomly like, you know, select one and say, hi, how are you doing? And, you know, that sort of thing. And so they want activities and things to be done at school that help them to mitigate that. And that help them to learn to know one another, learn peo- learn to know people outside of their discipline. Um, and just create a real sense of community. I attended, I'm, I'm a master's student, but I attended Baruch College um, to get my bachelor's degree. And because I was an in-person student, there was a very large sense of community because I was seeing people, you know, regularly. Um, it it, um, so it definitely helps to have activities that happen at school and to give people reasons to come to school outside of academics and get to know one another. So that's what we want to try to do. And we also want to try to find ways for our students, because we do have a lot of students um, who don't live in the tri-state area and would not be able to come, um, physically to something. But we also want to work to find ways to help them create a sense of community as well, whether it be some sort of online bulletin board or, you know, pen, you know, an online pen pal type of thing. We're not sure exactly what, but that's what we're looking into now.
So are you also imagining, uh, since, uh, cultural activities were mentioned, something that would enhance curriculum within the School of Professional Studies or?
I don't think we're tackling curriculum so much. Um, I, I think we leave that to, um, our wonderful faculty um, and staff that way. I think we would definitely, like, we've heard tutoring said a lot, that is something that we think about. Um, the fact that, you know, because it's growing pains at this point, we're a newer college, we're a smaller college. And it's really just us trying to listen to the students and the things that they're saying that they need. Um, and the things that would probably be present, um, and, and are present in traditional colleges, um, and in-person colleges and how to administer those things to online students, right? Because it's different. You know, there could be an office of student activities and you can go in there and sign up for a tutor in a traditional college. But in an online, you know, setting, how does that work? Where do you go? Is it a portal somewhere? You know, so it's that sort of thing. Um, we do not wanna, um, for lack of better terminology, burden ourselves with curriculum. We think that that is, is taken care of and has been well taken care of, um, at CUNY, um, for years and years and years. But we do want to facilitate, um, students doing well in school, completing their education and remove as many of those impediments as we feel like we can with our level of expertise.
I was thinking more along the lines of experiential learning because there's that sort of, there's a kind of attention.
Well, we do have, um, we do have a grant that we're going to administer, uh, related to, uh, professional development. And so one of the things that could be considered is experiential learning. That's something that someone could apply for a grant for. Um, so yes, we, we have taken that into consideration.
Any other questions? Student?
I don't have any question. I'm just, I'm just glad that, uh, School of Professional Studies is finally getting a call in station.
May, may I, may I have a motion to approve? Second. Those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion is approved.
Thank you very much. Thank you, John. Thank you, Zee.
Our final, our final policy calendar item, item number seven, uh, is an increase to the ceiling of payments of stipends, uh, to student leaders. By way of context, um, the board policy that establishes the authority to issue stipends to student leaders require that the maximum, uh, award of stipends be reviewed every two years and changes considered tied to the Consumer Price Index. In, the last time that this, that the, the ceiling came up for review was in twenty fifteen. And at that time, um, there was a, a zero point seven increase in the CPI. Um, and because it would have resulted in a negligible, uh, increase in student stipends, the board committee at that time voted to take no action, um, and to leave the, the maximum award levels as they were. Twenty seventeen, two years later, um, we're asking this committee to, um, to consider, uh, the relationship between the maximum award and the Consumer Price Index. There represents a three point seven percent increase, uh, between this, in the CPI between twenty thirteen and twenty seventeen. And in terms of the range of, of existing maximum stipends, which are determined, uh, the stipend level are set at each campus, it would range from, uh, a maximum award from a hundred and eighty-three dollars. I'm sorry, the increase, the annual increase would result in a change, uh, an increase from, uh, a hundred and eighty-three dollars for the year on the low end to three hundred and ninety-eight dollars on the high end. And just by way of context, uh, no campus is required to hit the ceiling. And none, none of our campuses, nor the USS, have there. But this would, uh, increase the ceiling, uh, the maximum stipend award that, uh, campuses could, could raise the, the student stipend for. Uh, this was discussed, uh, at the Chief Student Affairs Officers Meeting, the monthly meeting of the Vice Presidents of Student Affairs. And, uh, there was a, I think, a very robust conversation, but the Vice Presidents of Student Affairs supported the, the increase in the maximum award level. And we also had this discussion at the USS Plenary Meeting. It's last, it's May Plenary, and the USS also supports this increase. Uh, again, reminding the board that it's up to the individual campuses to set their, their stipend leader, uh, levels for elected leaders. And none of them currently have hit the cap.
Any questions? May I have a motion to approve? Second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? The motion is approved.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And that concludes the policy calendar item.
Information items, Brooklyn College Graduate School Activity Fee.
Great. May I please give some context on that? The, this would have involved a, a one dollar increase in the graduate student activity fee to earmark funds for the Veteran Student Organization, which is a very dynamic and robust organization at Brooklyn College. Um, however, since only one percent of the graduate students voted and only point six percent of all graduate students supported this, um, the referendum is not being supported, uh, by President Anderson. Um, the college believes that other funds can support this very worthwhile organization, and they intend to do that. Um, Vice President, uh, Jackson, uh, is here representing the college in the event that the committee has any questions about this. Vice President Jackson, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Any questions, comments for Vice President Jackson?
Doesn't require a vote. This is an information.
She just information on, okay, fine.
Ron, would you just like to maybe just make a statement about it?
Sure. Um, so last year, we presented a referendum for our Veteran Student Organization last year that did pass, um, through the undergraduate students. Um, so the veterans actually haven't even had a full year right now with their current referendum. So the concern was that they really haven't demonstrated if they actually need the additional money. Um, so they've, they've started this past spring with half of the referendum. This upcoming year, they'll have that complete referendum. Um, they'll still have the opportunity to go to the Graduate Student Organization to request grant funds, um, as well. And so what we've, um, advised them is to kind of really use the year to kind of gauge the millions that they have right now to determine if they actually do need that additional funds as well as if they decided to go with the referendum again. Uh, we, we heard the board last year, um, with the low vote. And we've con- gone back to them to say, you know, you're really gonna have to get out there and push the students to vote on it, um, with a very, very low turnaround. Um, President Anderson just did not feel comfortable making that decision for all three thousand graduate students.
Thank you ver- thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice President Jackson. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Vice President Rosa. Vice Chancellor's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, since we've last gathered, it's been a very robust period of programming for all of our colleagues throughout the university and student affairs. Um, I'll just hit some of the highlights. Uh, on April seventh, more than a hundred and twenty CUNY staff, faculty and administrators who helped to execute orientation or transition programs at CUNY campuses gathered at City College for the inaugural CUNY Orientation Institute. This day-long program focused on the identification of best practices in new student orientation that have an impact on retention, academic momentum, student success and campus community building. Particular emphasis was placed upon the role of new student orientation and facilitating the seamless transition of transfer students and underappreciated and underattended to a group of, of CUNY students. On April twenty eighth, we're really pleased that more than a hundred faculty and academic advisors who are leaders in CUNY experiential learning space gathered at Gutman Community College for the Second Annual Experiential Learning Conference. Among the themes for this year's conference were the implications of experiential learning as a priority within CUNY's strategic framework and the role that academic advisement can play in linking students to experiential learning opportunities that build upon what they're learning in the classroom and help to ready them for the world of work. Uh, a very special thanks to President Evan Beck for his staunch support, uh, and really creating this opportunity for us. Uh, Laura Gambino from, from his team was a stalwart in pulling this together. And his remarkable team at Gutman, uh, really helped our team in, in the Central Office of Student Affairs to build CUNY's capacity around experiential learning. Um, on Friday, May twelfth, uh, we were pleased to host the twenty-fourth annual Vice Chancellor's Awards and for Excellence in Leadership at City College. This ceremony is a CUNY tradition, recognizing students who have demonstrated outstanding leadership abilities in both academic and co-curricular activities. This year, in addition to honoring two Vice Chancellor Award recipients, uh, selected by the Chief Student Affairs Officers from each campus, we also recognize students who have excelled within childcare, residence life and women-centered communities. They received the Childcare Student Success Award, the Resident Assistant Leadership Award and the Student in Service to Women Leadership Award. Uh, on May second, CUNY BMI held its Second Annual Spring Benefit Fundraising Event at John J. College of Criminal Justice. And I thank, uh, Chair Clark for, for joining us there and really helping us to host that opportunity. Hosted by America's psychologist and radio personality, Dr. Jeffrey Gardier, and honoring Assembly Member Michael Blake, President Travis and BMI's corporate partners at Citibank, the Spring Benefit was a complete sellout and exceeded its fundraising goal by more than, uh, by earning more than, uh, fifty thousand dollars in support of key BMI student programs. On May eighteenth, CUNIAC hosted the thirty-first annual Michael Sturman Scholar Athlete Awards Dinner at Queens College. The gala ceremony, uh, inducted a hundred and thirty-eight scholar athletes into the CUNIAC honor roll and celebrated forty-one CUNY student athletes who were named Division Three All-Americans. Stephen Catigan of Kingsborough, uh, Lindsey Piro of Hunter College, Carmen Cavayo of Queensborough and Timothy Sweeney of the College of Staten Island were celebrated as the CUNY Scholar Athletes of the Year. Um, for the all-sport excellence of their athletic programs, Queensborough and Hunter Colleges were awarded the Commissioner's Cup by our Commissioner Zach Ivshkovic. Finally, Queens College graduating senior Madison Rowland became the first player in women's college basketball history in any division to record more than two thousand points, one thousand rebounds, five thousand steals and four thousand assists. Rowland led the Queens College Women to the Elite Eight in the NCAA Division Two College Basketball Tournament. I'm also proud to report that Kingsborough Community College's men's and women's track and field teams were crowned NJCAA twenty seventeen national champions. Clearly, it was a banner year for CUNY athletics, and we're really proud of our student athletes. On May first, Governor Cuomo announced that the New York State Office of Alcohol and Substance Abuse Services had awarded grants to five CUNY colleges to support the development of campus community coalitions and foster community partnerships to help strengthen local prevention efforts, specifically focusing on students from ages eighteen to twenty-four years of age. Baruch, City College, John Jay, Lehman and the College of Staten Island, each were awarded up to a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars annually for five years in support of these programs. These campus-based projects support the governor's goal of promoting strategies that prevent underage drinking and equip students and their families with essential knowledge while continuing to make state, uh, and city campuses, uh, safer and their commu- surrounding communities. In April, the Central Office of Student Affairs was thrilled to learn that the FAR Fund, the Fund for Autism Research, had awarded CUNY an unprecedented six-year of funding at a hundred and thousand dollar level to support model projects at six CUNY colleges that support the success of CUNY students on the autism spectrum. Students on the spectrum are far and away CUNY's fastest-growing student population of students with disabilities. And this six-year investment by the FAR Fund has enabled CUNY to build its capacity to meet the multi-dimensional needs of neurodiverse students at the university. In May, uh, the Central Office of Student Affairs received an MOU from, uh, New York State Education Department Executive Deputy Commissioner Elizabeth Berlin proposing a five-year, four point nine million dollar agreement through which CUNY would provide supported higher education services to CUNY students with disabilities who are particularly at risk of being left out of the workforce. Such students include students with learning disabilities and the burgeoning population of students on the autism spectrum. The source of the funding is the Federal Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act, otherwise known as WEOWA. State Ed has proposed this partnership based on, uh, its validation of the efficacy of our CUNY Leads Program uh, for career readiness for students with disabilities and Project Reach, uh, which builds campuses' capacity to serve neurodiverse students. Our CUNY Disability Services Team has worked for a year with SED on this agreement. And we actually worked with the state to design a new contractual services category, supported higher education services for which these WEOWA funds could be drawn down in support of the success of CUNY students. Um, finally, on May twenty-second, the University Student Senate completed the academic year with a robust agenda at its monthly plenary meeting at Gutman Community College. This meeting was significant in that it closed an academic year during which USS achieved quorum at every single one of its meetings, plenary and steering committee. So when you consider the demands placed on our USS leader, schoolwork, family responsibilities and the considerable responsibilities of shared governance, this is a truly remarkable achievement. And it speaks to the selfless devotion of USS to representing the interest of CUNY's more than a half a million students. It also speaks to the outstanding leadership of our student trustee, Chika Oney-Jequa, and her vice chairs and a remarkable staff, including Donovan Borington. So thank you to University Coordinator of Student Activity Charmaine Worthy, Professors Hugo Fernandez and Emily Ty and Public Safety Officer Freddie Torres for their staunch, staunch support of USS throughout the year. And to President Evan Beck for allowing USS to call Gutman its home, uh, every second Sunday. Thank you. And that concludes my report. Thank you, and that concludes my report.
Are there any questions? If not, we can, if not, we can give him a little cheer. So much, Vice Chancellor. So now we will go into executive session, that means the camera goes off or?
You have to take a motion to go into executive session.
Oh, may I take, may I take a motion?
I move.
So move? Second, we are in.